Okay, so just to start off with, if you would, Michaela, give us a little bit of your background and kind of the experiences and skills that you think will lend themselves well to serving on city council.
Sure, so I know many of you on the call today, but more recently I have transitioned my professional career. So my name is Michaela Freiburger and I am currently the Chair of the Dubuque County Food Policy Council. I'm the Program Coordinator for the Dubuque County Energy District. I'm a small business consultant with our local Small Business Development Center. Previously, I worked for a economic development not-for-profit focused on downtown development and revitalization. And I also am a mother to a seven-year-old daughter, Charlie. So things that you may have seen me in the news for in the last couple of years was an opportunity I had to be part of a team filling vacant storefronts with pop-up shops of entrepreneurs, giving them an opportunity to try it out and see how it worked. And this was along the Central Corridor, which is along one of our most underutilized areas in downtown. Additionally, I was one of two people who really helped to, on the back end of things, make Dubuque's first major low-income solar project with Habitat for Humanity happen. And we are continuing that low-income solar project installation through my work and reaching 10 residents within the urban renewal district with the city's recent release of funding. Additionally, I have been in the news recently regarding our community-focused $1 million request for building a food systems under the Food Policy Council. So most of my work is something where I'm already intimately involved with most of the city departments. And I often work in the realms of housing, food, energy, business opportunities, arts, infrastructure, and other city services. And so with all of those different projects that I've been involved in, I feel now is the time for me to be on the decision-making side and start to really work towards proactive policymaking and not just proposing the policies, but being the one to vote on those. Additionally, our city council appoints our boards, commissions, and other councils along the way. And I see so many voices in our community that can be elevated, if I were to be City Councilwoman, to appoint them to these boards and commissions and give back some power, which some of them feel they need, you know, kind of some guidance from people who are intimately involved in the content, and I am already, to continue to make an impact and to continue to grow the availability of services within our community. So I have my master's degree in education. And so through that process, not only was I teaching full-time, I was working full-time as a teacher and going to grad school full-time. So I learned the importance of having time management and being able to continue to really listen to challenges that others are facing, as I know I face my own. But how can we work together to move our city forward? And how can we build a better community is something that I've really shown and demonstrated that I have the ability to do. And again, now is the time for me to step forward and to continue to address those issues at a larger level.
Okay, great. Couple of questions in follow-up, I guess. In terms of the interactions that you've had with various city departments, are there areas that you see from your vantage point that you think things are not working right or could be improved? What kinds of, you know, what kind of light has those interactions shed? I lost my verb there. What kind of light did that shed on those issues for you?
Sure, so through my now current professional career, I see a lot of ability to be proactive, especially within our housing and energy, you know, kind of combination. Our state in 2018 cut funding to aid those who income-qualify to get energy efficiency updates, including our small businesses. And so our housing and the zoning are kind of at a loss to walk in the door with some resources to help, you know, whether it be Community Action Programming or it be our Green Iowa Mayor Corps. I can just see our city being much more proactive due to the lack of state funding that's allocated towards programming that they previously were part of. Additionally, I see our business opportunities in our community. We have, you know, hit a point in the pandemic where we are going to have many of our businesses not come on the other side of us, but we have so many young professionals who are looking to find something new in their life. And that's kind of going in that entrepreneurial spirit direction. So how can we leverage those conversations for those smaller businesses within our community versus scoring a large retail employer or a larger-scale manufacturing employer? How can we really build our community from the ground up? And I think that is something that we have the structure for. I just think it's not being tapped into. Additionally, we have many infrastructure updates and contracts that are out there that we can definitely have some fresh eyes on and some creative perspectives to help us move forward. One of those particularly is the parking ramp. Last night, we had talked about it, and it's something that's kind of in the works with Cunningham and Butler and Heartland to talk about it. This is really a need that they still have. But I think it's time for us to start thinking creatively. You know, not only electric vehicle stations, but also how can we add green spaces? How can we do vertical-scale planting for food production? Whatever it may be to break down the barriers of the concrete jungle that is along the Central Corridor. So I think the departments themselves just need a little more creative opportunities to come to the table with ideas. They need some more boots on the ground, real-time data, which I'm able to provide to them to help make decisions to better impact our neighbors.
Okay, just to clarify, when you mentioned the cut in state funding in regard to energy assistance and that the city should be more proactive, is that to say you would support the city providing more energy assistance funding?
That is correct. At this time, the state code does not allow us to do anything other than the 2012 code. So it's not like they can enforce more strict energy efficiency codes. However, in many situations that I walk in the door, you know, we can put solar on some homes, but not every home is eligible for solar. Energy efficiency is a great way to invest our dollars, not only for reducing our carbon emissions, but also for helping alleviate expenses of our neighbors as well. So city funding is needed just due to the lack of state funding.
Okay, and your point about elevating voices by appointing them to boards and commissions, seems to me they're always trying desperately to drum up people to be on boards and commissions. Do you think that there's under-representation there? That there are folks who want to be on boards and are not getting that opportunity?
So at this time, I am on a county council, so that's appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And I have been extremely intentional through my entire, you know, career as Chair to bring people who represent very different communities than what I come from. And so I have continued to find various black voices to bring to the table and also elevated some of our immigrant populations by bringing them to the table. And so I see our city, when you are applying to be on these commissions, often there's very much a confusion of, oh, do I have to have my degree, you know, from college? No, actually, you don't have to have a degree, you know, from a college. Like, just basic education is often a barrier for people who want to be at these decision-making tables. So community education and empowerment is really a key asset to bringing those who are not at the table to the table. But additionally, we do have some, currently, they haven't met for almost six months, and they're supposed to be meeting almost monthly, boards and commissions. And they are feeling like their voices are not being heard. So I think it's really important that if we have an established body that we are following by the bylaws and we are also saying, hey, you know, just make sure you have your meetings, make sure you're bringing information to the city council from those boards and commissions. But once we kind of break down that even further, often people who are of color may be asked to be on everything. So how can we tap into someone who is not at any of our tables? Whether it be in the arts community or it be in transportation? How can we find other neighbors and other friends of friends who want to be at these tables but feel like they don't know Robert's Rules? Or that they're just gonna miss meetings? So I think that there are some barriers that are currently perceived. And if we break down that and educate, we can empower those who are currently not at the table to join us.
Okay, thanks. And just in reference to the parking ramp, obviously, we've talked a lot about that, but and understand kind of where you're coming from on that. Do you think, what do you think your vote would have been had you been sitting at that table two years ago?
So I actually had a really long conversation with a previous councilman about their vote. And I would have not voted for it at that point. Just due to the nature of the contracts that had previously been agreed upon with DuPaco to complete an assessment after three years of parking needs. Additionally, I like to think creatively, and in the energy sector, we also touch on transportation. And so just recognizing that a lot of young professionals may not have vehicles or they live within a walking proximity to this location, I think I would have voted no just due to the nature of that information was not presented to council at that point. It was just, here's how many people we're gonna hire, so we're assuming everyone is going to drive a single car. And that's what our needs are.
So, Michaela, fast forward to today on the parking ramp. I mean, so we have an agreement in place, I guess. And so I guess your thoughts on what, if anything, should be done now or attempted differently, because, you know, we have an agreement in place. And so where are you? How would you approach it if it came to council to do something different? And knowing that we have an agreement on, you know, that's got signed and inked?
So I really think that we are at an opportunity, and it's already starting to happen, to have those conversations with Cunningham and Butler and with Heartland. And those, I was told last night, are continuing to happen, just to value the assessment. But I think we need to start looking at how we have a lot of creative minds on our city council. One is a small business owner. And how cool would it be if, instead of just putting a parking ramp up, we also afforded some spaces for small businesses or an incubator to be generated on the first floor? What if, you know, we were able to say, hey, City Councilwoman Rossell, you are really into trees. Let's try a vertical-scale planting, never been done before on a parking ramp. You know, and how can we incorporate green spaces, edible landscapes, nevertheless? And also, how can we help alleviate on the, you know, the roof of the parking ramp? It being just literally the sun beating down and, you know, the heat's being emitted again into the rest of the concrete jungle. So how can we think creatively about putting a parklet there that features a little play space? Many young professionals may have children that they may have dropped off there or there might be an area that could be utilized by neighborhood children. How can we think creatively about that space? And I think the partners at the table really are just trying to assess right now how many people are going to be in the office at one point? You know, if they're gonna have 100 parking spaces or they're gonna have 20 parking spaces. So I think we don't need a monstrosity if we have 100 parking spaces by filling it with all of these amenities that I'm proposing. However, if there is a need, you know, still after these dialogues take place, we need to start being creative. We need to start modeling ourselves after other cities. And we need to start doing things to help fill in gaps that people are addressing along the way.
Good, thank you.
Michaela, another hot-button issue here that I feel like we're hearing a lot about is the Five Flags Center and the possible referendum on that. Where exactly do you stand on the status of Five Flags?
Sure, so I am for Five Flags being revitalized. I see, as I work for a small business in downtown Dubuque that is open after Five Flags has their concerts, just the economic boom that many of our small businesses need to stay afloat on the other side of the pandemic. And I can just see Five Flags continuing, A, with tourism growth, but B, also providing a community with a center. I'm 100% for, because I'm one person seeing the boots-on-the-ground impact, sending it to a referendum for the community to decide on what the fate will be. I have often thought about how impactful it would be because some of my favorite bands, we just can't support here in Dubuque. And I go to concerts at Five Flags as often as I can. Number one, it's just due to the size of it. But number two, we are putting Band-Aids all over the building, and it's not something that's going to be sustainable into the future. 91 degrees at the end of one concert does not mean tourists are going to come back into our city because they were uncomfortable by the end of the concert. So how can we stop putting Band-Aids into something and how can we make it better? However, I think before all of, you know, the dollar amounts are thrown around, we do need an updated construction cost due to material changes, especially since COVID has thrown everything out of whack as it relates to construction. So we can have a better assessment of what the value of the project will be. And then also challenging HR and his staff to be creative with their collaboration. How cool would it be if it was named after Bob Woodward? It's Bob Woodward instead of, you know, Five Flags or Amy Gilligan instead of Five Flags. But how can we be creative with our community partnerships? As so many of our other spaces and other buildings have had that take place.
Yeah, I think they've talked some about naming opportunities. I don't know to what degree they haven't called me yet, but do you think that, so support the renovation, but I hear you saying you're 100% in favor of having a referendum. So if the referendum comes back and people say, nah, don't spend that kind of money, what would you want to do next? Just dial it back and go for another lesser, less big project or?
So I would say by that point, we need to start thinking about how like the American, you know, the whole waterfront was redone, the Port of Dubuque was redone. And that was very creatively, and it was also worked through various community partners and community initiatives. The city will have to put dollars into that. There will have to be public funding that goes towards this project in the end. However, that challenge of adding a dollar for your ticket fees so we can see additional revenue on the other side will have to be even more extensively discussed. If it would be $5 so we can pay back that public funding portion in a quicker fashion. Additionally, we would have to start looking at what specifically we would be able to secure after the three or four years of construction as it relates to not only community things, but the DocDogs? Are we gonna be able to get the World DocDogs? Are we gonna be able to continue with Travel Dubuque to bring the wrestling tournaments in? To bring in the gymnastics tournaments? And if we are unable to scale those up, again, and not for keeping putting Band-Aids on this building, we're really gonna have to assess and scale back drastically or potentially find a different site for this. But I think there can be a person who can champion this project and really take this project forward and excite the community about the investment to vote for the bond referendum.
Okay, looks like Mike was able to join us. You wanna say, hey, Mike?
Hi, Michaela. I apologize for being late.
No problem. We just were talking about Five Flags. And, okay, I think, did you have any follow-ups there, anybody? Or, go ahead, Dustin, you got a different topic to bring up?
Yeah, so one of the things that I want to talk a little bit about is the performance of the city manager and also kind of the workforce culture, employee culture in the city of Dubuque. We've reported on multiple lawsuits that have been filed related to employment, working conditions. Also, you know, there's the push by some council members to fire Mr. Van Milligan and a lot of their underlying reasons related back to the workforce culture and some of the things that were happening there. So I guess I'm curious what your kind of assessment is of that situation, both the city manager but also kind of the state of the workforce culture with our city of Dubuque employees.
So first off, I do know that there is a new HR staff lead. And additionally, there has been some staff changes since the whole conversation of firing the city manager has taken place. Some of the problems that we are discussing as it relates to the workforce culture did fall underneath of the HR department and their lack of concern to address when something was brought to them. And so since then, I have continued to watch our city just continue to remain status quo as it relates to workforce culture. I do have friends that work in multiple departments within the city. And I feel that right now, we are at a pivotal moment just due to COVID shaking everything up and giving people a whole new perspective on how our city should be run. Additionally, we have more opportunities like this, you know, Google Meet call today to really connect with people differently than we have in the past. And so really just having those conversations has led to some very concerning conversation that we are, from the top down, just kind of directing the city, which I take a different approach to handling conversations that are difficult. I feel that the employees and the department managers in the city are doing a wonderful job getting their jobs executed. But additionally, they need to have some support if there's something new and creative to help address a concern or a problem within our community. And so while I would say, in my experience with Mike Van Milligan, I have had, you know, a lot of dismissive, I would say would be the best term, of some of the approaches that I was trying to take, whether it be for the city to enact a food policy council or it'd be challenging him to think creatively about a low-income solar project in our community. I think we are at a moment where there is an opportunity for the city council to do their job and for a new mayor to do their job to help bring new ideas to the city council's forefront. Last night, it was made obvious at the League of Women Voters that the city council members, that are sitting city council members, have no clue what's happening with the most base-level employee or within certain departments. And I, being just the nature of my work, whether it be volunteer or my career, have intimate, more intimate knowledge as to how our city employees are fully capable of doing programming and thinking creatively about how we can bring in dollars and how we can leverage other dollars, other than just our local taxpayer base. And so I think that would be a challenge I would have, you know, for Mike is to allow some creative freedom to start to take place within some of our departments, whether that be with policy implementation and being proactive or it be just bringing very important ideas that he may not feel, you know, are so important. Just letting some of the city council members kind of bounce those ideas off of him to see if that would be something the council would move forward with. Now, as it relates to workforce culture, that really does impact if you feel like you are valued. In addition to, you know, it's on the taxpayers to pay for a court case, which was one, and the city will have to pay. So I feel that we need to start being proactive as a female in the workforce and as a young professional. I am open to listen to any concerns of any of the city departments. And I think I understand enough of Robert's Rules to know how to bring that up and not just let that go behind the scenes and not wait until it's much further down the line as a lawsuit before things are addressed.
Well, when you say council members don't have a clue what base-level employees are thinking, I mean, to what degree is that the role of a council member?
So the city council actually, you know, helps with the mayor directing what the city direction should be taking. And the manager should be taking direction from the mayor and the city council. And so at this time, a lot of actions have been filed and received. And that's just due to the nature of the current working relationship with our current mayor and the city manager. So we do have some more proactive, you know, conversations taking place that are boards and commissions, which don't make it to the city council. And those are things, number one, that are non-budgetary. So they don't need to be, you know, given dollars to make successful. But it takes away some of the power that our boards and commissions feel they have and some of our staff to execute some of those boards and commissions' guidances or affordabilities. So it's not just one person making the decisions. We are communal pot, you know, as a city council, we need to recognize, we need to listen, not just to one person. We need to listen to multiple voices.
So do you think boards and commissions should be reporting out to council members as opposed to up to a department head?
So the way I run our food policy council with the Board of Supervisors is I report to them twice a year. Now that we have staff hired, we allow them to report to the Board of Supervisors quarterly. So this is a council doing work, letting them know, five-minute report, 10 minutes for questions as to what we're doing. It's much more beneficial than just sending them a piece of paper to let them know what's going on, number one. Number two, it keeps us proactive and it keeps us on our toes because we are embedded into the food system and wanting to, you know, continue to be ambitious in the food system. But when we take it to someone like a city council, that is where we can have questions asked. Are we too deep in the trenches that we're not able to convey this message across to the general public? And it gives an opportunity really for the council to understand where the departments also may lie as well.
So, Michaela, for my clarification, are you suggesting that the city council be more involved in the day-to-day operation of the city offices?
I am not saying that. I am saying they just need to have more accessibility to understanding what the city offices are doing, not necessarily controlling them. But just really having an understanding as to what the general departments are up to, what they're doing. Yes, they can report. Traditionally, that's at the leisure of what, you know, the mayor or the city manager would allow for a presentation. But if we have more communication, more understanding as to what the departments are up to, what the councils and commissions are up to, that's when we build more of a transparent city. In addition to, we build more of an accessible city. We break down barriers for those who potentially want to be on a councilor board as well because they see that they're able to go in front of city council, talk about what they're doing. Or the staff person they're associated with can do that as well and say, this is what this board and commission is up to.
Thank you.
You talked earlier about, and I know you were involved in the pop-up shops on the Central Corridor. So how would So how do you, how, how would you assess the, the city's effort to put emphasis on the central corridor and to try to build up that area? Uh, do you see some, some wins and losses there, or how would you, how would you rate that?
Um, more recently, it's been a lot of losses. We had a lot of community input. We had a lot of community steam, um, when it came to, number one, um, executing in 2018, what was called the builder, build a better block exercise. That was something that came to the city of Dubuque from Texas. It was modeled, we were the biggest one to be hosted throughout the United States. And so we had a lot of, you know, eyes watching to see how we engage the community, to see how we avoided, um, gentrification of that neighborhood, but also how we, um, utilized the spaces which are currently being underutilized. After we, um, hosted that, there was continuous involvement of the building owners, neighbors, businesses, to come to a table to continue to talk, um, not only about hosting an event, but what longer-term strategies, uh, could be utilized to help benefit this corridor. And in 2019, there was, um, an event hosted, um, filling vacant storefronts with pop-up shops and entrepreneurs over seven weekends. And, um, there was a lot of entrepreneurial spirit behind that. Um, entrepreneurs had access to storefronts, um, for free, some of which we were able to get a grant for to cover the utilities of the space. They had, um, to provide their own, you know, displays and their own merchandise, but other than that, the burden was not put on them to try it out. We partnered with a couple other org, local organizations, and there was a lot of interest of entrepreneurs to find what's next. What can we do? And so we, um, continued as a committee, uh, to talk at a larger scale as to what was next. And it really came down to engaging the building owners and continuing to find ways to involve neighbors in the planning process. And, um, then after we hosted this event, everything kind of, um, city priority-wise, fell out of place for the central corridor, um, avenue to really open up doors to, to these conversations. And so being, you know, kind of behind the scenes, uh, being part of those conversations, not all of them, um, but most of them, um, I feel like there was a lot, there was garn, we were garnering community steam. We were garnering the trust of the building owners. We were garnering the trust of the neighbors that this isn't going to be, you know, a big box corporation coming in and just plopping whatever they want to in that space, but really building what the community needs were. And there was a nice plan that was generated, um, through, um, the planning department in, in correlation with this, and that's just a living document. There's nothing being acted upon it. There's complete streets, um, built into this plan. There's a little parklet built into this plan. Um, since we've, you know, had this plan built, we've lost five businesses right along 17th to 18th alone, um, and we've really, um, not watched a lot of these plans kind of naturally grow from the community up. Um, so that's where the public investment was really crucial to keep moving forward that steam. Um, but now we're just watching it, um, kind of sit there. I think-
If you were to, to get a seat on the council, what sort of action would you be pushing for the council to take in that area?
So I think there are some really key kingpin, um, spaces in that area that can be great drivers, not only for economic development, but also for community engagement. The building owners are very, um, workable in that, and these neighborhoods, and they're really interested in not just having a vacant storefront anymore. They wanna fill it with someone. So if there's a way to create an incubator space in a couple of these buildings, number one, to leverage what Key City Creative Center is doing. Number two, to leverage, um, not just another retail space, but a collaborative space. Um, and then also an opportunity for, um, potential growth of entrepreneurs into a storefront versus just out of their homes. Um, this would be something where we would start to see younger community members as well as neighbors, which were a high-traffic, um, part of our, uh, 2019 installment of filling vacant storefronts. Um, neighbors starting to really, from the ground up, build a community around these businesses. Additionally, if we, um, work towards investments in things like energy efficiency for some of those apartment units, um, you know, through the housing department and our community action programming, and we really worked to, um, create kind of more of a walkable corridor. Um, we would see, we would see natural growth in those areas continue to grow, um, outside of just, you know, kind of putting some, some dollars towards those few things.
A, as we talk about things that, you know, you, you might support that, that might mean spending a little more city money, talk about where you think the, the city budget might be able to be cut. Where, where do you see, uh, those dollars coming from? Are there programs where you think the city's spending too much?
So, first and foremost, I think our city doesn't do a very good job of retention of our tax base. I think that there is an opportunity every single year, um, put into our community and our surrounding communities with thousands of college students. We have a couple, you know, people who stay to go to places like Cunningham and Butler and Heartland and a couple of our other larger corporations. But it, all in all, we really need to start working on our retention strategy to increase our tax base. And with that, not just allowing them to go to our, you know, communities surrounding us so they can get the taxes, but keeping them within the city of Dubuque with our own amenities, um, and keeping them here as our taxpayers in the city of Dubuque. But as it relates to budget, um, I've come through the budget a number of times, and there are a lot of creative strategies that we are currently not implementing, um, that other cities and other school districts have implemented, in the end, which has saved them a million dollars. And so, things like investing in, um, renewable energy and clean and renewable energy and energy efficiency. Our buildings are outdated and antiquated. We're spending a lot of money on utilities. We're spending a lot of money, um, unnecessarily on those buildings. So, uh, a little investment upfront for those will reap on the other side five years from now. Um, lots of money that could be coming back into the budget. Additionally, there are some projects which the city council outwardly has, um, put lots of dollars towards and, and community partners that they put lots of dollars towards. And every time I look at the annual reports from those organizations, I'm very concerned that the city is a large portion of their budget, um, and that we are not seeing our return of investment from those dollars, uh, back into our community. We may have in the past, but we're not seeing them now. So if there's a, an opportunity to bring those partners to the table for them to think creatively, if there was no, um, million dollars coming to their budget, what would that be? Additionally, I see, um, a lot of, of dollars being spent in our communities, um, to really just put a Band-Aid on things, um, and, and if we start to look at what other cities of our size are doing, we have the ability to think creatively, um, whether it be with our electric vehicle fleet that's being attempted to take place, but there's chips problems, um, you know, or it be, um, you know, just how our departments interact. It, it's, I know they're trying really hard to make housing and inspections as seamless as possible, but there's a lot of overlap and very much, um, dollars that were, um, could have been spent differently instead of trying to, uh, confusingly overlap each other.
So you had mentioned that there's lots of projects that the city is putting dollars towards that, uh, may not be good investments. Could you give some specific examples of that?
Sure. So, um, I look towards not-for-profit organizations. I work for not-for-profit organizations to complete work within our city. However, when you put money towards a new, and when I say new, it's less than five years old, not-for-profit and commit forty thousand dollars, uh, over a term of three, you know, forty thousand dollars each, um, for three years. Or you work to put dollars towards an organization that's been around for some time, but they just haven't got their financial stability on their own. When you start putting investments towards organizations and not-for-profits that just can't do it without the city funding, that is when, um, you start to find yourself increasing your dollars, um, towards those organizations in the long term. Um, it's not just a, here's a quick fix, or here's a programming influx of dollars. Um, you're in it for the long haul if you are interested in keeping that program alive. And so if we need to be, if we really need to get down to the itty-bitty, nitty-gritty, um, I've personally been connected to the Dream Center, and I've personally been connected to the Fountain of Youth. Um, but I just see the programming and the outreach, um, specifically for those programs. Um, they had to morph due to COVID, I understand that, but not being utilized as intended. Additionally, um, there are some other larger organizations who receive almost a million dollars in our community. Um, and those dollars, I do not see impacting positively the day-to-day work of all of our, our neighbors. And, and so I see, see those dollars being reassessed for the return of, um, return of investment back into our community.
We're, we're getting close to, uh, the end of our time here. Go ahead, Bobby.
Oh, yeah, just real quickly, and this might not be a quick answer, because I, I know we're wrapping up here in a few minutes, but, uh, I know you talked about development of the, um, north central corridor there and some of your experiences there and ideas. Any other, um, areas? I mean, the city has, uh, just acquired some land, uh, to, for potential development down the road, so to speak, near the southwest arterial. Any thoughts on that or any other areas that you think the city, um, should or should not be investing in for, for growth, uh, for the future?
Sure. So first off, I'm gonna say that we have, um, an opportunity that's been brought to our city, um, from a land trust organization as it relates to residential development. Um, they're called Silt, so, um, the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust Organization. And so when we talk about my projected growth, we are going to need housing, um, and workforce housing to go in tandem with that. Um, and so I see places along the southwest arterial, uh, as being a great way to integrate that plan. Number one, average age of farmer in Iowa is fifty-nine. They are not generationally passing on their farms. They are converting them because they can get top dollar to residential housing. So if we can utilize some of that land for food production, number one, you're going to watch, um, you know, more jobs in that, you know, line of work grow, but also you're going to watch, um, affordability to land access, um, to many of our neighbors who are unable to, to buy land and they wanna farm, they wanna grow food. Um, so I think we need to start thinking creatively about some of those land uses, not just for manufacturing and retail, um, but also for food-scale production and, and really building a food system within our own community so we can keep people healthy and fed, um, so they can continue to work in our community. Um, but, uh, you know, I think places like that along the southwest arterial are, are great ways that we can tap into that. Additionally, um, I think JFK has a great opportunity to grow and expand. Um, I myself, um, am not for the, the proposed current proposal of the sidewalks, um, but I think we can start thinking creatively along those cor, that corridor. Um, it is a concrete jungle. I am watching neighbors, often of which, um, who are in wheelchairs or who are, um, um, from communities of color, walking along that corridor, and I'm just terrified that, um, someone's going to hit them. So I think that is an immediate need. Um, but how can we build spaces that are for, um, them to stop in along the way, whether it be amenities like a grocery store, a locally-owned grocery store, or it could be even a space for them to, you know, support a local business and grab a quick cup of, um, coffee on their way.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure I caught that. So-
Sure.
On sidewalks, yes or no? I, I thought I heard you say, oh, so no on sidewalks, but what about, you, what you said as far as the safety and your concern for the safety of the area resident?
So I think I, I'm not for the current proposal of the sidewalks. Um, there's not enough, um, other infrastructure that's built to support me. I think creatively, proactively outside of the box, and that's just something that's just kind of putting a Band-Aid on the concrete jungle that it is right now. So, thinking longer term, how can we, um, build spaces and amenities along the way to allow our neighbors who are currently, I'm terrified, you know, of walking on that, on that, along that corridor, but, um, how can we add amenities and make it more accessible throughout the entire, you know, corridor, not just for sidewalks? Um, and so I think additionally, we can look at FDR Park. That's a great place, um, um, for us to utilize, not only, you know, like, we need to start thinking creatively, uh, to keep our retention, to keep our workforce base here. And that is including with other amenities like parks and utilizing it for, um, not just trail spaces and bike trail spaces, but what else can we do along there? Um, is there a way we can put a couple little pop-up shops to do rentals or to do, um, a coffee shop for in the winter, um, you know, so there's, there's a lot of spaces that the city owns that I currently have, um, you know, on my radar, uh, but those are just the couple in the timeframe that I have for you.
Okay. Um, just to, to kind of wrap up, Michaela, I was, I was a little surprised to see you jump off the call when, during the, the forum, it was the league forum, uh, before the primary. Uh, just wanna hear a little bit from you about, about the, the amount of time that, that you know council's gonna take up and kind of how you're gonna manage that, because you are a very busy woman and you've got a lot on your plate.
Sure. So, um, that happenedstance to be the one time that, even prior to me, uh, being announced, that I already had set aside to be with my daughter. Um, and so I happened to be with her, um, just for that one hour, I was unable to be on. Last night, there was a forum. I was there. I was there the whole time. I met with constituents after that as well. So, um, while it may seem like my work has me very busy, it's because I am doing the behind-the-scenes conversations that city council members often have, um, whether it be, um, with organizations or it be with people, I'm already doing that. I, I already am affording my time to having those conversations and to being with, um, my neighbors. And so, um, I, 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 with the food policy council, I'm setting aside eighty hours, um, a month, um, just to complete that work. Often, I was hitting a hundred and twenty hours a month prior to our, um, staff being hired in July. I still am putting a lot of hours on the food policy council. Those hours would be transferred over to city council as time that I'm out in the community doing work, um, going to meetings. Um, I'm really fortunate that both of my jobs are very flexible for time. And so, um, I don't have necessarily a specific nine-to-five schedule where I'm sitting at an office desk. I am flexible with those times. I'm flexible to be meeting with constituents and to be going to meetings. Additionally, I have had so many behind-the-scenes meetings with, um, city staff just to get projects launched um, and to be part of, uh, very different conversations. So those are things that I'm naturally doing, um, on my own time. Um, and so it just happened to be that one time where I had spent sixty hours in, you know, the three weeks prior to that, hosting an event at Comiskey Park called Every Voice Matters, bringing everybody, um, who is traditionally left behind to the table, inviting all of the city council members to come, give five minutes of their time. And, um, you know, so I really focused on that effort, and I just happened to have one hour that was during a time that, um, there was a forum, so.
Got it. Okay. Well, we, uh, really appreciate you spending the time to talk with us today and, uh, putting yourself out there and stepping up to run. Um, you know, so many people, uh, see things they don't like in their community, and they don't take that step. So, uh, goo, good for you, and, uh, we wish you luck in the rest of the way.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time. I truly appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Please, Michaela.
Bye.